Shall I be asked to say to the answer to my law... ...uh, this is about what happened.
Yes.
If, as it were, proceedings have been started and not completed and the review is quashed, it's 143B. Really, 143, 3 and 4, tenancy continues until any of the following: no proceedings were drawn, penalty paper taken. Six months and no proceedings have been brought; proceedings would have been brought on this hypothesis. So, in effect, the majority penalty does not go on until it is... There's been a review, there's been... Uh, it's just a direct answer to a question I was asked.
I'm not sure I picked that up. You say it continues until proceedings.
Until one of those three things happens, we withdraw the notice.
Well, if you haven't satisfied the requirements, you won't get the order. Does that mean that the proceedings are determined in favour of the tenant?
No, if the review alone is quashed on judicial review.
Sorry, no, I wasn't contemplating that. I was contemplating the situation. The court under 143D2 must make an order for possession unless it thinks that the procedure has not been followed. My question was, what if the court does think that the procedure has not been followed?
Well, where I'm just going is because of the context, there having been a quashing of the review.
No, no, this is just a discreet question. Because you were making a point that procedural matters don't really matter, but that's the only thing that...
Well, no, I wasn't making that point, Lord, I'm saying that the requirement of having a review within a time...
Yes, those procedural matters.
...to be directed.
Yes.
But if we hadn't given the right notice, if we hadn't told them about a review, if we hadn't conducted a review, of course, we would not get our order. And the normal course, that might well mean dismissal of the proceedings.
Yes.
But if what had happened, this is where it's frozen, what had happened was, we'd been taken up on judicial review and our review was null, then those proceedings would be sitting there pending a new review or withdrawal. The court would not normally dismiss them.
Yes.
Would have no reason to. And so, because the notice hadn't been sent, what I said was, if the notice itself was quashed as void...
Yes.
And I gave the example of one corruptly induced...
Yes.
Then, of course, there would be no notice of proceedings for the leave under.
Can I just see if I've followed the first of those two alternatives? This is where the answer to 143D2 is, no, it has not been followed. You say that would mean that the proceedings would be dismissed.
In the law of course...
And, sorry, can I just complete the question? That would take us to 143B, 4B. The proceedings have been determined in favour of the tenant.
If the proceedings are dismissed, then they are determined in favour of the tenant.
Right. Would they have to be dismissed? I mean, supposing the floor was under 143F5, that the tenant hadn't been notified of the reasons for the decision, there'd just been a letter saying this is the decision. Surely you'd be entitled to adjourn and... Or suppose the reasons were palpably deficient, the wrong reasons for some other decision?
That's precisely what we're saying, if it's quashed.
Yeah, but you wouldn't quash it, because quashing it would create a secure tenancy. So, surely what a court would do would be adjourn and say, give you time to put in...
This is the whole issue in the court. Court, county court has got the right of quashing power. So, if the county court...
But it wouldn't be quashing the reasons, it would just be adjourn.
If the county court finds, has got power to make a ruling, and finds that it's unlawful, then the proceedings are going to be dismissed. This is the very reasoning of the court. This is the whole point of the court. Whereas the administrative court has got power to quash the review and leave the proceedings in place. We have suggested, as an alternative, that the powers of the county court might be there, not dissimilar to the way my old court might have said, but can I try to add something to it? Because I'm anxious about...
It's fair, well, let's move on.
These... We accept the contention of the minister, rather, but what our approach, this is on the Cochrane, does do is reduce the role of county court to one that is fairly recognized. That is right, and our suspicion, that's the same intention, of these sorts of provisions, doesn't eviscerate particularly, but merely recognizes that in particular circumstances set by power that has to be addressed by another court. And the substance of it is all well-earned, it is the difficulty of producing evidence of the same locality itself. And, Lord, what Mr. Draball says is that the reasoning is wrong, because if the administrative court quashes the review, it would quash the whole proceedings. We, arguing with them, if it didn't also quash the notice, the original notice, then there is a review of the authority, and that would be the normal course of events. And then, to better the judicial review proceeding, quash the notice of proceedings success. That could happen, but that would be rare. And that's what I was talking about, what the authority needs for leaving. Mr. Draball takes issue with our proposition that if... May I remind you, Lord, we're not in the area of proportionality now, we're just talking about domestic custody, or what applies. But if the review is... ...halted, the whole proceedings fall, and therefore we become insecure. We are saying that is not right, that it is perfectly possible and proper for the authority for the case to be adjourned, for the authority to take the decision on the review, that may lead to withdrawal of proceedings, or what may lead to otherwise. That is the issue Mr. Draball takes issue with, and which we have been making our suspicions of, I was just coming to our suspicion, that that is not the correct opposition of law, and it is not correct, that Sir John Locke had it right. He said you could quash the review, leave the notice, and then you don't not prevent a protective security by the court. And that would happen if you quashed the original notice, and if the original notice was bad action, because we would not have served the notice in time, that's fair enough. Lord, without a friend relies, I've dealt with this in our printed case, if we can pick it up, 208. I'm sorry, just before we do so, I'm sorry, if we still have bundle two open, can I deal with one other point that I don't want Mr. Draball to come back to? I've just realised my microphones aren't on, and Lord, it's very profound you delete it that way. One other point that Mr. Draball makes in his printed case, which is that there is a change of wording between the introductory tenancy provisions for mandatory orders in the county court, the mandatory possession orders, and the wording in the demoted tenancy scheme. It's not something he's elaborated already, but it was something made in his printed case. It's based on this: if you go to 143D2, it says the court, this is all at tab 10, the court must make an order unless it thinks the procedure has not been followed. If you go back in tab 10 to the beginning, you see the equivalent provisions relating to introductory tenancies at 127. Two, the court shall make an order unless the provisions of 128 apply, and that then says, over the page, we have to serve the notice, state the court will ask to make an order, set out reasons, specify a date, shall not entertain it unless begun after the date, shall inform the tenant of his right to request the review, and it doesn't bring in the review itself. Now, Lord, we say nothing turns on this wording, the intention was very clear, and was intended to achieve the same effect, and one cannot read into that a big change that was intended to overturn Cochrane. That is his proposition. And we respectfully submit, it's discussed in Gillboys, but for reasons of time, I really don't, can't go there now and cover the rest of what I need to cover. We invite you to reject that proposition. Nothing could be clearer than the scheme is modelled on introductory tenancies, as the evidence shows. If it was thought to be anything more than a mere drafting revision, then it would have been introduced to introductory tenancies at that time. The more so, in a sense, the more so because of the point made earlier by my Lord, Lord Brown, that there was no prior proportionality here in relation to introductory tenancies. That is all we wanted to say about that. And I apologise for going to 208 and then going back, but going back to 208 of our printed case. The appellant's argument is that ratification is not available. He relies on two cases, co-operative retail services Taff Eli and Ashbury Railway Carriages, and they're cases where the purported decision fell outside of the decision-making question. We rely on Waverley and Hildon, proceedings issued without the authority having considered the statutory criterion perversely or in reliance on a decision that was for any reason void or not annality, because the authority had statutory power to bring proceedings derived from section 222 of the Local Government Act 1972, that should have said. And the action was on foot, this was at 209 now, the action was on foot albeit the authority was an incompetent claimant. We say it takes Annie's minute beyond the breaking point to suggest that any defect in a decision renders that decision or the whole proceedings incapable of ratification. The issue is whether what has been done or failed to be done is of such an nature that its decision is annality, quoting there from Annie's minute. Now, the question is really, notwithstanding an error in the process leading up to the decision, there remains independent or sufficient power to take the decision in question. The present case, we have power to issue proceedings, and we have power to continue them. Lord, the case on which Mr. Draball most relies here is a case called Rafferty, at bundle 11, page tab 98. The Gypsy eviction case, if I go directly to page 477, letter D. Just below this, D, the reasonable counsel accordingly was not, in my judgment, free to treat the interference, the intended reclamation, redevelopment. For such period of time, as would have resulted for the wholly up of complete eviction, as outweighing the effects of eviction of the gypsies then present, the decision at the bottom of that paragraph is only explicable to me, one made by a counsel which will either not think of its powers and duties by some error mistaken as to the nature and extent of them. But we say that that is on all fours with co-operative retail services, i.e. they had no power to bring the proceedings. What is significant about Rafferty, which we do rely on, or our point, is that ratification is available, and that's at page 461, which sets out the facts, and I'm going to go very briefly to the facts below F. Actually, we need to start at 460, at D. The plaintiff is resolved on 16th of September 1985 to commence proceedings. Between D and E, October 85, Tudor Price, Mr. Justice, made an order in summary proceedings to recover possessions, possession. And between E and F, on 19th of December, Mr. Justice Peter Payne set aside the order, directed the claim received by way of trial in the High Court. The important point about this is, here, is this. At 461F, when we go through the fact, we find at, between C and D, that it was what was then called chairman's action authorized the issue of the proceedings between C and D, which was in September 85. Below F, delegation by the plaintiffs of the power to make decisions to one member, that's chairman's action, as contrasted with delegation to committee, was considered by Mr. Justice Wolfe and held to be invalid. His decision was upheld by this court. The plaintiffs, having regard to the decision of Mr. Justice Wolfe, resolved to ratify the chairman's decision of the 16th of September. The date that's missing from that is Mr. Justice Wolfe's decision in H, ex parte Hillingdon, was November 14th, 1985. In other words, well after the proceedings had been started, it was found they had not been properly commenced, because it had been done by chair's action in a form that was held to be unlawful, delegation to a single member. That was ratified, no point was taken on that. That's all I wanted to say about that, that Rafferty is not an answer in Guinness, but an answer we say in our favour. When we say that even if the procedure is stopped at some point, is faulted, vitiated at some point, there is ample power to put them on hold and continue them and decide to continue them without dismissing them. Those are the powers of the arising from judicial review, if you quash, as you can on judicial review, the review itself.
But none of this would apply to a decision that the decision lacked proportionality on the merits, would it?
Well, Lord, may I respectfully say that goes back into proportionality issue, which we're not dealing with here. That is the question of whether proportionality is.
Yes, but if it is relevant, none of this arises on this aspect.
I'm not sure why it doesn't. If we are, if we can be faulted on a proportionality ground, then we would be faulted, it would depend what was faulted. If the review, our view, was faulted for that, then so be it, yes, this would all apply. It would need to fault the decision to issue the notice itself before it would vitiate the proceedings as a whole. You'd have to go back and vitiate the notice. That's what my only friend seeks. But if the decision of the court is that our review procedure lacked proportionality, then all that would be at fault, and proportionality was determinative, would be the review procedure.
But it couldn't be, it couldn't be made good, is the point, isn't it? I mean, if you made a disproportionate decision, are you suggesting that the facts could make, lead you to make a proportionate one?
Uh, Lord, that goes back to the criteria, that if we've, if we've faulted, if we are faulted for having not weighed things up properly, there's more than one proportionate decision. If we're faulted for that, then yes. That goes back to whose position, of course. But, Lord, I'm very anxious to try and get through this in the time left, I hope that has answered that. So, the conclusion we say, in answer to my Lord, Lord, apologies, I hope I have answered that, if that is a ground for quashing, it depends what's being quashed, really. We totally accept if you can quash the original decision, that it's void, and we haven't issued proceedings in time, so there you go. I think you had informal, sorry, but there one was it. And, Lord, but if there is power to bring the proceedings, there is power to ratify and continue them, applying Hildon underneath Rafferty, the submission that Mr. Draball is making, the question is whether we have still got part. Yes, if proportionality has knocked us out forever, then clearly we have, that's Rafferty. But if it's just knocked out a stage, it's not. Lord, the submission, we say, and I say this today, that Lord Newburgh will probably smile, is what was put to me, right? Lord Justice Sedley recently, is the lea submission, nothing will come of nothing. And that's not right. I, of course, have to have it explained to him at the time. I want to move on to the powers of the county court, which is issue eight, under which Mr. Draball contends, and this really is not, it's nothing to do with proportionality provisions, to do with the correct interpretation of Doherty, that the county court, the effect of Doherty, that the county court now has a wider, at least a wider jurisdiction to determine facts, and we've made our submissions on that at 220 to 232. The problem with it is this. It doesn't and can't work in domestic public law, it's really 221. If the court is to decide disputed issues of fact, so on this basis, the law, proportionality is not, the issue is not a judicial proportionality by the court, what we're talking about. If the court is to decide disputed issues of fact, that can only be as a stage towards the court deciding for itself whether or not the facts as found should lead to eviction. Otherwise, the fact goes nowhere, the court could not then determine what the authority would have decided, cannot in response to this sensibly be pretended that the court should dismiss all proceedings where it finds any fact, at least above a de minimis level, differently to the facts found for the authorities, simply no theoretical basis, nor does it pursue any rational end. It'd be absurd for the court to say, well, because you've committed only three acts of violence against the prisoners rather than five, you re-acquire from security. So, what the appellant seeks through this route is the same as he seeks otherwise, which is for the court to determine the merits. And we then set out why in our suspicion, we don't think that anything as dramatic as that was intended, and properly construed, what, Lord, Pope was considering is the sort of facts which in any event might vitiate, a court judicial review could go into, in other words, E and O office. And in this case, the disputes do not fall into any of that sort of dispute. I appreciate I'm slightly running ahead to the facts of this case, but it's convenient to deal with it here. And the relevant findings we've set out at 233, and say these are not the pieces of the primary facts, whether the respondent could decide that Devon was visiting, whether Clive had been nuisance or annoyed, I'm sorry, had been annoyance, yes, nuisance or annoyance to any other person. The police officer is a source, another person, doesn't have to be someone in the neighbourhood. And we then set out why the sort of facts which were in dispute there do not fall within those which the court could decide. And although we don't think that the panel was properly to be characterised as ducking the issue of where Devon lived, if it can be said not to have been clear about it, we respectfully submit that it is quite clear what decision the authority would have made, having regard to the fact. Mr. Recorder Donovan, in 2007, we talked about a review in 2008, had explicitly found that Devon was living at the property, even if also with his girlfriend from time to time, 3239. The only added evidence on the appellant's behalf were written statements from his partner and Devon's girlfriend's mother. Sorry, that's Mr. Pinnock's, not Devon's mother. Neither, and the latter whom did not attend, the effect that Devon had been living with the latter, that's the girlfriend, for five years, which, I don't know if I said which did not, which clearly did conflict with the recorder's conclusion. There was nothing in it which could have led them to depart from the recorder's conclusion. There's no other conclusion which the panel could realistically have reached. Indeed, the statement of the girlfriend's mother, Sheila Sinister, is at page 171. It simply states Devon normally stays at her house every night, and has been doing, except for Mother's Day and Christmas Eve, uh, the evening, Mother's Day evening, if that's a correct term, he's been doing that for four or five years. Well, that clearly conflicts with Mr. Pinnock's statement at 161 with 62, because Devon was also living at home during his time on curfew. I know I'm going very quickly, but all these points are actually set out here, I just want to draw attention to them. And we rely on, my Lord, Lord Newburgh's judgment and Holmes Moore's about how to approach these decisions, if it is clear, and so be it. It is, of course, right to make this point, I've used the proposition that to a certain extent, and leaving aside section 62B, the authority do need to think about Article 8. Actually, of course, the obligation under, it's a shorthand, the obligation under the act is to act conformably with it if that obligation applies. So, we don't actually, what I'm trying to say is, we don't have to spell things out in terms of Article 8, or in terms of proportionality. What one does is look to see, if one looks at all, if one looks to see the decision. We're not to be faulted just because we haven't explicitly stated we're doing something, and obviously I'll be coming back to that on issue 7. So, what we're saying is that the findings of fact that we made are amply open to us and are not open to a court to interfere with, and indeed, so far as Devon is concerned and his residence at home, we couldn't conceivably have found any differently on the basis of two statements which simply conflicted with what the recorder had already found. Incidentally, I think I may have said this this morning, there was never a statement from Devon, I didn't live at home, there was really first-class hand evidence or a statement. There's never failures of any of the children who are that, as to their whereabouts or their actions. The second point on powers is the point I describe as a discreet and perhaps innovative point, which is that if this court holds that Cochrane no longer holds good, then the court ought to recognise powers in the county court. then the court ought to recognise powers in the county court. They can't confer powers to quash, because section thirty-eight, obviously, obviates that possibility, but ought to recognise that the powers of the county court are wide enough so that the court can and should indeed only make findings, necessary declarations that do allow the authority in an appropriate case to retake the decision. I'm now coming back to, I think, my lord, my point. Uh, in other words, if they are rectified or whatever.
Retake the decision, what, to give notice of proceedings?
No.
Which is the decision?
Never do that.
No.
It would be to retake a review decision.
I see. You, you, you accept that if there's a defect in the notice of proceedings, that's fatal?
Well, if it is a defect, that depends whether or not
It's a fatal defect.
A particular error is fatal, it, it, and so on, lady.
Well, I was just saying, if, if it is a fatal defect.
Yes, yeah, but we, we
You accept that's the end of the matter.
Yeah, sure. I, I, I address fatality in substantive terms like a corrupt notice or bad faith notice. There could be other defects, but we haven't gone into what they are.
Well, well, yes, I mean, if, if, if the convention applies disproportionate notice at that stage.
But that would maybe suggest we would have had to take a proportionate decision. Then we're getting into that discussion. What we say is that, you know, if there's a good case, for example, my lord, if we do have to take a proportionate decision at the second stage, we're perfectly entitled, I think, to say, well, look, we'll issue the notice and see what's thrown out. Uh, in the economy, I think, we only have to look at what is required. We can't really conduct a hearing before the notice. We have demation orders, that's a good use of third order, almost. Demation of a pre-notice review and a county court, uh, people, people are giving thinking that there was a fairly high bar level thrust across to evict, uh, in ASB cases. What we're saying is that assuming that the relevant finding does not vitiate the whole process from the off, uh, then the county court should adjourn to allow the authority to retake the decision, save in those circumstances where the administrative court would itself have gone beyond quashing and made a mandatory order, and we've exemplified that, and don't pretend it's more than an exemplification, paragraph two one two. That is to say, where the administrative court finds that the only decision which could be taken is one in the claimant's favour, then it normally makes a mandatory order rather than quashing, or if the facts found by the authority as applied to the law as now reconstrued and correctly construed, equiperate inevitably to decisions, or sometimes the administrative court will reach a sort of point of exasperation and say you've had too much.
How does, how does work? Will there have to be, if the court does this, will there have to be a fresh section one four three E notice?
No, because if the one four three E notice is quashed, we're dead.
Well, quite, but, um, how, how does the tenant get his right to a review then?
Yeah, because the review's been quashed and we still haven't helped. Or rather, the review's been declared to be embalmed.
So there, there's nothing wrong with a notice as such?
On this assumption, yes.
But, but the court is therefore consciously sanctioning arrangement where the review will have to be carried out in breach of section one four three F six.
Yes, but, my lord.
The review, the review must be carried out before the date specified in the notice. So isn't it a bit odd, I appreciate you say that date isn't of the essence, but for the court, your argument of the court consciously and intentionally requiring something to be done, which an act has said can't be done after all, has to be done before a date.
My lord, unless that's right, even a quashing by judicial review would have the effect of automatically creating security, which is Maloney Crane's submission.
Provided you've reached the end of the year.
Well, in all, my lord, cases in which we've had a case, we've had the review, we've gone to the county court, we've gone to the admin court, which is done in less than a year, are, are, are to be congratulated, amended, but they are the exception, not normal. Especially if it then goes on here, then, lady, if it comes up here. And, my lord, we respectfully submit that it is not our public law, whatever the grounds are, that we are looking to confer substantive benefits out of the errors of public authorities. Sometimes those errors are fatal, but by and large, we seek to uphold public administration.
And what happens to the proceedings? The court says, I'm sorry, we can't make an order. The court allows a fresh review, and none of that fresh proceedings, or do you come back and rely on the review, on the review which took place after the proceedings were issued?
Yes, you do.
Retrospectively to justify the proceedings? Because you have to keep the proceedings.
It's not to retrospectively, because, my lord, it is, there's no requirement that the review be carried out, the requirement is the review be carried out before, yes, it's only because it has to be carried out before that date. But, my lord, that is not only more honoured in the breach than in the observance, but it is honoured invariably in the breach if there is to be a review at all. It simply will not happen in those times, and often at the request of the tenant, who, who wants to be represented or wants to bring witnesses and so on and so forth. And that's why we submitted and the court found that it was directory only. Lord, it cannot be right that because we make a mistake in the review, that is fatal. That puts a burden on public administration which it cannot bear and is not consonant with the thrust of this edgery.
I understand the policy, probably, just have, certainly had difficulty with the statutory language.
Of course, my lord, and one could look at that section and say, uh, that provision, and say it's really rather a silly provision in reality if you weigh it up, especially when you take it with the regulations, which I think are in the bundle, but I don't really want to go there, make that good, but it really is an impossible burden. Uh, uh, and the court should not, in our respect of the submission, be putting more burdens in the way, uh, 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 of, uh, the pursuit of antisocial behaviour, action against it, which is absolutely necessary and required by the law. I'm sorry, but I do have to say that, make that submission. Uh, my lord, I think I've drawn attention by law to, uh, the, the section we're dealing with of our submissions, which are two one three to two one nine. Uh, we, we refer to, uh, as Lord Paul Crystal Lovell, we haven't put it in the bundle because the county court powers have changed, my lord was in that case. Uh, the powers haven't changed. It was very similar in some ways, it was a right-to-buy application, um, and possession proceedings, and whether, what order they actually held in. Uh, and the power of the court was to decide in which order. My lord, we have referred to CPR relevant provisions in footnotes, which we say are ample to allow this course, and furthermore, that the overarching purpose of the CPR is served. Um, can I end on this point then, by referring to a case Mister Luber brought in called Barber, which is at Tannan Court. It's a very short point. At the end of Barber, this was a case where there was a successful judicial review of a decision to evict a person who was excluded by the homeless persons, et cetera. Lord, at the very end of Barber, the very last paragraph, forty-seven, uh, it's a very short point, uh, consequences, the actual failure should be dismissed, suggested by Mister Beglin, this might have consequence, the council either be issue stopped or prevented on Henderson principles, seeking possession or in the second action, where it carry out cases I've identified, but nevertheless ultimately conclude that recovery possessions to pay for remedy. Lord, I, can I pause there and say, I don't think that this would, that's what, I would come within Henderson and Anderson, because the circumstances wouldn't change, uh, it would be a different time and it would be a different timing. But on that premise, uh, Mister Judge, Lord Justice Patton, says, uh, if Wednesday type public law consensus are to be committed to running private law proceedings for possession, then except for private law rules against relitigating previously decided issues, has to be recognised, and the case cannot treat the second action as an abuse. All I'm saying is, but there is, it is a paragraph in which it is suggested from the book, I feel, that we may have to adapt procedure to meet the circumstances. Uh, and that really, I think, is, 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 as it were, as best I can do, miles to Lord Newberger, but we do need to be a bit flexible. Lord, I'm moving on now to the penultimate issue, which is identifying exceptional circumstances. Conchie to our arguments, then, it helps, as the court does have jurisdiction to determine proportionality for itself. Then we do seek guidance from the court, what it means in practice, in terms that do serve to distinguish it from a reasonableness jurisdiction, because the jurisdiction, uh, as described by Strasburg, encourages confusion with reasonableness. It's now introduced disproportionate and reasonable. Uh, and we submit on a proper approach, we should not remit this case as on what we say is a proper approach, uh, uh, that nothing has been disclosed which meets what we say is a very high bar. My lord, rules or principles are necessary, they're much more necessary, uh, my Lord, Lord Mount says, well, Blackett, I don't know, outcome in Blackett was sort of encouraging in terms of it's not going to be many findings against the authority. And, my lord, when you're dealing with a multi-judge court applying principles, it's a lot easier to, for them to apply principle and get to those full internal checks. When you're dealing with an individual judge, it is in our service much more necessary that there be clear rules or principles to ensure consistency. Uh, and we've addressed this at one seven one to one eight five of our case, of our pinched case, which we have very little ground to, to quickly highlight some points. Uh, at one seven one, the submission came unanimous, it's not the authority to have seen its reasons. We've also now seen Horwich, in which, uh, the European Court, of which Strasburg finally said, uh, that it's for the opponent to rebut the claim. The, the original version of his judgment said it was for the court to rebut it. That was Mister Luber's allusion to my invention, since I caused them to be ripped into a sort of John, John McEnroe style, you cannot be serious. And they then reissued the judgment. Uh, we then go on to discuss what's been said, what was said in K and the difficulties with it. There's no, no mileage to be gained at this point from going through these passages. And in, in, in one seven four, it says, if there's no real distinction between proportionality and reasonableness, and/or the two terms now go hand in hand, and if it's the experience of county court judges on which the law is to be placed, it's not near impossible task for them to distinguish the statutory criteria of reasonableness and one of proportionality. And that is the genesis, I think, of Lord Justice Law's opposition, that they would in effect become secure tenants, uh, uh, may be said that that goes too far, nonetheless. Uh, uh, that is the essence of it, because in secure tenancy cases, I guess the large majority, they turn on reasonableness, not really on whether there's been a breach or the stat and the other. That normally is the lesser, maybe first stage is maybe easier. And it's certainly not what Parliament intends. So contrary to our submissions is a right, the bar is one that must be considerably higher, uh, 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 and we do contend that, that different judges will reach different positions, uh, absent some sort of powerful finding material, uh, guidance from this court. Lord Bingham provides some points as to how high the bar is, as a result of which he would not have remitted in K, even though the facts may be thought, uh, on their face of it, they've been in occupation for, some of them, for certainly twenty years, now I think some of them even longer than that. Um, we say, what, what then is left? The manifestly disproportionate is already caught by domestic public law. As to be manifest, has to go beyond mere differences of opinion as to what is reasonable. He quoted the English Oxford, Oxford English Dictionary, as to what manifest means, and it therefore must equiperate to no reasonable personal authority. Refer to Blackett, we say Article eight does not confer right to be provided with a home, which must be highly material. Uh, and we then quote from my lady, Lady Hale in K, some observations there, and we are submitting that the existence of a positive obligation to protect the occupier's Article eight rights is a prerequisite to the availability of an Article eight defence. The right to respect is not to become a right to be provided to the home. That cannot be sufficient to give rise to a defence, it must be one owed by the authority seeking possession, and it must be a positive obligation in tightly the occupier to remain in the premises in question. Lord, Maloney, it may be said that I am submitting a principle, but wouldn't, that doesn't give examples, well, well, I am, because I think examples are indeed very difficult to come up with. One can come up with in that context, say, the care home cases, the care home place of cases, although fair enough, of course, by the rest of the law, but one can imagine there a positive obligation to leave someone in a particular place owed by the authority in question. But, my lord, we submit that this is not an empty bit of, of, of speechifying or principle-making, because we think that if you are saying to a county court judge, it's not enough to say, uh, it's exceptional, it's not enough to criticise, it's not enough to say that the authority didn't do this or didn't do that, you must find that such are the circumstances that this authority is bound to leave this person, as a matter of human rights, was bound to leave this person in that accommodation. But maybe only for six months or, or what have you, I'm not saying indefinitely, it's not all one size fits all solution, but that is the correct test, especially when we, which is, which achieves something that can properly be characterised as highly exceptional, to the extent that that was recognised by the town, uh, in a context in which the authority is entitled to its property rights. Uh, personal needs should not come into play where they're the subject of other statutory provisions, i.e. homelessness, children's act, uh, and so on, family law, e, e, even if the individual is deliberately excluded from them. Uh, appropriate, uh, alternative accommodation, objects and arthrite, so scarce, appears to be disregarded unless the occupier suffers a bunch more than others, and then, uh, we've sourced that from Lord Bingham. It must mean, what we say, obligation to leave someone in that accommodation, because nothing else has any principal basis. Uh, and we say that nothing raised by the, uh, 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 And we say that nothing raised by the appellant funds anywhere close to consideration of this sort. Paragraph 185. Whatever the test, there is no material in this case for it. If we are correct on this, the proposition also applies to the appellant's suggestion at his 113, that if entitled to a proportionality hearing in administrative court, the defence should be transferred to rather than dismissed, we say if no disproportionality is shown, there is no basis for doing so. So far as he says that there should be a transfer to the administrative court, even if the only grounds are domestic public law grounds, then he has had precisely that hearing in the county court and lost it and appeals it. If he wins his appeal on that ground, which is what we're about to come to, last round, in effect, then we suspect this is all going to be somewhat academic in so far as you have expressed your views on whether or not there's been a breach in domestic law and on whether that merits remission and whether or where to be remitted. So turn to our last heading, this is specific to the proceedings. Issue 10 is whether we fail to take relevant considerations into account or whether we reached a disproportionate decision. And we deal with this at 246 to 252 to 253. And we simply make a number of points out of that. Mere fact that the decision letter does not refer to each and every matter raised does not suggest that the decision makers failed to take account the arguments, many of which were put before the review panel in the form of a skeleton argument. And we've given the pages where they are to be found in the footnote. There's ample authority to effect that the decisions of scheme administrators are not to go through the fine tooth comb. And that's where we quote the passage from my Lord, Lord Newburger in Holmes Morehouse. In the present case, the decision letter on its face refers, and sorry, in that quote of paragraph 51 from Holmes Morehouse, sometimes it's even obvious for the rest of the reasoning read as a whole that it would have been the same decision. It's what we're saying about taking the decision of the recorder and the mere statements of the two others which simply conflicted with it because they said he's been living somewhere else for four to five years, but there was already a finding that he was living there a year before. That is the point there. And the decision letter says, the appellant's part, the base of the paper, refused to accept seriousness of behaviour. And the counsel has used a range of warnings, interventions and legal action in effort to address this behaviour, all of which have been unsuccessful, and I've given you the reference where you can get that in the materials. And many opportunities to engage positively. They continue to pose a serious risk to the local community. And this, we say, is clear that the review panel is well aware of the appellant's arguments. He now seeks to advance on proportionality. Well aware of the availability of other less severe remedies. May not have been mentioned, but they are well aware, they're informed. Senior housing officer, one of them, is at any rate. Means of achieving the authority's aim took the view that such remedies have been attempted over the year, no effect on behaviour. Nor was the likelihood of their success improved by the refusal of the appellant's appellate set seriousness. Fully entitled to take this view and conclude protection of the community must prevail. And then goes through in 250 other matters which have been, which were taken account of or which were not at the forefront. At the end of the day, the very extent of antisocial behaviour may suggest not that more detail is required, but less. Facts at some point come to speak for themselves. And we're entitled to apply a standard that reflects the proposition, enough is enough. The appellant's, and that is saying whether it's disproportionality or reasonableness. The case might conceivably be correct, that Parliament may not have intended to pass to lose a home simply on the basis of a possible annoyance caused to policemen. Where it's the first, and we're not even sure of that, it's an introductory tenancy, can we not expect and demand decent standards to not go around annoying the police? But not when there's been this background history, not when there is this attitude on the past tenant or his partner demonstrating a very real past, no real past intention or future intention to attack the behaviour. And the argument is really saying, which is a point I say that we don't need to set out and say we have made a proportionate decision. The issue is, have we done so? It's not being captured in particular terms. It's a good example of the type of matter which we likely to be raising almost every case. We could go through in even more detail, but we really think we can't, both for reasons of time. And because I think if we get to this point, and I don't think we do get to that point in this case. And we end with a quote from a case called Red Path, and again, it's from Newburger. And we rely on it, or it's a very simple proposition, of anyone, I think he says, anyone who keeps up with the news, I was going to say reads the newspaper, who keeps up with the news knows just how serious this issue is. And I refer, that's why I referred this morning, to some of the notorious, and in some cases, Pilkington, rather shaming this whole case. Issue 11 is whether a decision to evict can be upheld even if the reasons given are held to be unfounded. We deal with that at 254 on to 270. Particularly refer to Mohammed and Hamish Smith in Fulham, which says that the decision is at large basis for the facts and as to the exercise of the discretion, that's in the review in that, to review under part seven. And one of the central purposes of the review procedure at 260 is to enable matters to be taken into account, may not have been considered previously. Mohammed is in a 2001 case, there is a decision on homelessness review, and they are the very same sorts of review as are being carried out here. It would be completely inappropriate for this sort of administrative decision making. There is no reason at all, having regard, subject to considerations of fairness, of course, giving opportunity to deal with matters, which which indeed is a well-versed area where the court would step in and say the statute is not enough and so on, we would have to do that. There's no reason at all why they should not reach a decision for different reasons. The decision is not confined to an appeal on or due purely of the notice, it is a decision whether the decision is that to proceed. And even if the reasons for it are not the same and subject to fairness, there is no reason at all, and plenty of authority or strong authority, to say we can reach that decision. And indeed, it will often be in the tenant's interest that we do indeed take it, have regard to later developments. The appellant has, at 264, we make the point, the appellant's always accepted that if the original notice is not void because at least one ground survives, additional matters may be relied on. We don't understand that distinction. It says, notice takes five grounds, four which fail, new ground would be added. But if all five fail, new ground can't, we think this would be absurd. The only question is whether it's fair. And then we deal with whether the county court had power to uphold the decision where it only upheld one of the three grounds on which we found it. And therefore, it can't be upheld because we haven't got a decision. That gets into the sort of situation I'm saying. It would be quite absurd to say, well, this quashes the whole procedure. Because, as I say at 269, otherwise we've got to list, if we have nine findings, we've got to list each one and sort of say, we would evict on one and five, but not on, and go through every permutation. It is, with respect, quite absurd. And it is the fallacy. The question is whether we should allow the tenant to come securing it, and that's what it's about. Final ground is whether the grounds have to constitute breaches of the tenancy agreement, which is issue 12. And we have dealt with that at 271 to 274. On which we submit, 274, that the reasons may be anything relevant to the authority's housing management, assuming that it arises or becomes known after the date of the demotion order. And subject, of course, and I accepted this, I accepted this a moment ago, to considerations of fairness, so that there's been a possibility of dealing with it. If we are correct on this, then it affects the issue of what order is made. Mr. Dragan still seeks a determination, even if not on proportionality, then on domestic grounds, which he says he can have in administrative court, even if he cannot have it in the county court. But I dealt with that a moment ago. I think that's far as, it says domestic grounds, this has to be on the basis, the appellant has not yet had a judicial review decision. And that must be a reference back to the ground who advanced the county court of appeal that having found against us on Clive's conduct of Devon's residence, the judge could not uphold the decision. In fact, even if we are wrong in saying the judge could do so, he did make the necessary findings because he found against us on whether or not they were breaches of the tenancy. But he found the question he said we were wrong to ask, but would be the right question, was whether the conduct justified the order. And at Court Bundle, page 78, paragraph 68 of the judgment, we say he found that we asked the right questions. He concluded that we evicted because of the conduct, not the fact that it amounted to breaches of the terms. That's Court Bundle, page 78. 78, page 78, and at 68. And we're saying that that's what he found, and if therefore we did ask the wrong questions, nonetheless, we got the right answer, as it were. So there would be no substitution of his views for those of the panel on his findings of fact. We would have asked, as I say, the wrong questions, given the right necessary answer. May I just have one more?
Yes.
Mr. Manning, address the point made by my Lord, Lord Newburger about compliance with the provisions in section 143, I forget which. F6. Makes the point, I think I've already made the point, the tenant on a review might ask for an adjournment. And in fact, the regulations which you have put without going to the, do expressly require us to adjourn in some circumstances. Or they may require, there is power to ask for an adjournment, so. Simply reinforcing, I think, my answer to that. Lord, it's not actually possible because I can tell. Lord, those are my submissions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manning. Yes, Mr. Dragan.
Lord, my lady, can I helpfully hand in two documents which we heard during overnight and during the day?
Three documents arrived, three?
Three arrived?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yes, I've forgotten the third. The third is section 191 and of the Housing Act, something like that. The two documents that I was referring to, and which I'm going to go straight to, were a document called factual update in brief chronology and an outline of reply. And my lord, I hope putting at least some of our reply in writing is helpful. It obviously largely deals, because of magistics, with matters that were said yesterday rather than today. And I propose to concentrate some at least from my all the submissions on what has been said today. And my lord, can I, my lady, can I go first of all to our document called factual update in chronology? I stress that this is not an agreed document. It is simply records, as far as the up-to-date position is concerned, our instructions. But it does record that on our instructions, developments since 2008 are, first of all, only Peter Pinnock and Christine Walker are resident at the property. Mr. Pinnock's a pensioner and Miss Walker works at the Manchester Royal Infirmary in the patrolling department. Clive Pinnock lives in Hyde with his girlfriend. Devon and Trevor in prison. Iran was released from prison in July 2009 and moved in with his sister in Helms, Manchester. Arain has obtained employment as a cleaner at Manchester Royal Infirmary, moved out of the address in July 2009 and shares accommodation with a friend in Clayton, Manchester. And our instructions, no further allegations of nuisance or antisocial behaviour have been made since the review hearing on the 3rd of July 2008. And then the document sets out chronologies, and your lordship and my lady might find it helpful to find the dates of birth set out on the last page of this document, and in particular, the ages of the time of the notice to terminate the demoted tenancy. Clive 26, Devon 21, and the twins both 19. So the primary purpose of the update is that if the court is persuaded that the correct approach is a proportionality approach, the relevant date for that exercise being the date of the actual eviction, or the date of the court proceedings that will lead to the eviction. There is a very live issue that ought to be remitted as to whether it is proportionate in the light of the circumstances that now prevail. And in particular, I stress the fact that only the parents are actually resident in the premises, so that eviction will not touch, whatever one makes of the conduct of anybody else, will not touch the sons. And my lord, can I then, against that background, go straight to the merit, the factual merits of the case, largely in response to an exchange that took place this morning about the extent to which all relevant material would be taken into account as part of the decision to demote, as opposed to raising new considerations that fall to be considered in the decision to actually terminate the demoted tenancy. And my lord, we looked this morning, or your lordships were taken, to paragraphs 32 of our printed case. of our printed case, which needs to be, which needs to be read together with paragraph twelve E to F. Sorry, paragraph twelve, but in particular, paragraph twelve at page six, E to F. Paragraph thirty-two does set out a number of matters that should be thought about in relation to the overall proportionality of eviction in these circumstances. Uh, of course, I accept that the history up to the date of the recorder's judgment, which led, which confirms it or made the demotion order, would have been taken into account and plainly is, is taken into account by the recorder in his judgment. And accordingly, I completely accept that there is no need at this stage to revisit the factual allegations that led to the making of the demotion order. The demotion order has been made and has not been appealed. But if I take your, take your logic back to the point I made in opening, the legitimate aim in question, which is the legitimate aim we set out at paragraph twelve, E to F, is the protection of the neighbours by the removal of the source of antisocial behaviour. No one has, except by way of example, that possibly it might be sensible to make a demotion, sorry, to terminate a demoted tenancy, simply to make an example. No one, no one has suggested otherwise, any legitimate, other legitimate aim that might be in play. And we do submit that this is a time-sensitive question. You are dealing with a not unfamiliar, indeed very familiar situation of quite appalling behaviour by, uh, young boys, men, adolescents. Quite appalling doesn't put it strong enough in the case of one or two of the examples. But in a situation where the sons will grow up and will either reform or leave. They have in fact left. The eviction is taking place either at the time of the hearing in front of His Honour Judge Holman or because of these proceedings, and I accept that, now effectively, or at the time of remission. And it does seem to us to raise a real, very real issue of proportionality as to whether, as we put it in, in paragraph six, so page six, letter E to F, whether any, any mechanism by which the eviction of Mr. Pinnock will fulfil the aim has in fact been identified. We say it hasn't. I've sat and listened to be told what the answer to that question is. Answer comes back there, none. And in my submission, whatever one, whatever one concedes, and I do concede that one doesn't go back to a situation in which no demotion order has been made. It plainly has been a demotion order. You still need an answer to that question. And that question is posed very sharply on a proportionality test. Yes, is posed very sharply on a proportionality test. And my lord, that's, that's, my lady, that's the factual background. Of course, I accept, uh, that there will be many cases where a demotion order is made and where nothing much has happened since the making of the demotion order, other than minor examples of antisocial behaviour, in which case, no doubt, it will be possible to, uh, bring the demoted tenancy to an end in accordance with the principles of proportionality. That I completely accept.
You're saying here, the further incidents were so serious and resulted in such long prison sentences as to keep these youths out of the neighbourhood, that, um, they don't qualify therefore?
Uh, I, 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 it's not, I don't say that, actually. What I do say is that, um, if you, well, I, I do say you need to identify some mechanism by which, which is going to, the, the mechanism of the possession order is going to assist. No one has relied on, the two people who are serving prison sentences, no one has relied on the, on the murder conviction, which is some time ago. And I'm not diminishing it, I know what it is. Um, but it's not, there's never been an allegation it's connected with the, with the occupation of the premises. Uh, uh, and, um, uh, uh, and the, the, um, uh, the perpetrator of that very serious offence is not on the scene. As far as Devon is concerned, the, His Honour Judge Holman found as a fact that there was no nexus with the occupation of the premises. And that is, that's a crucial issue. There has to be some way of moving from Mr. Pinnock's occupation of the premises to the need for the eviction, however unpleasant the, the conduct otherwise is of the children.
I, I may not be undervaluing the deterrent effect. Um, if this sort of issue, um, becomes the subject of court proceedings, time goes by and it's always possible to say, ah, well, it's no longer a problem and no order's made, and then people know that really these demoted tenancies mean nothing, or very little.
Well, I, I'm aware of that and concede some force in that in relation to the appellate parts of these proceedings, which, um, have been protracted partly because of the state of domestic law, which is, which has required, um, examination of that. But if your lordship goes just back to the simple, our simple table of ages, even at the time of the, at the date of the notice to terminate the demoted tenancy, you are not dealing with any child at all. Last page of the, um, of, 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 of our summary. Even at the time of the notice to terminate, all the children are adults, all the sons are adults. By the time you get to the hearing in front of His Honour Judge Holman, which is not a particularly unusually protracted matter, some time has moved on. The notice to terminate is, um, is dated the sixth of June, two thousand and eight. So we're, um, more than two years on from the notice to terminate now and we're a long way on by the time of His Honour Judge Holman. Inescapable fact, forget the hit, forget us sorting out a client dot it, which has led to delays, I completely accept that. The inescapable fact is that this is a notice to terminate, served on relation to a parent who has not himself committed any antisocial behaviour, it doesn't exonerate him from all blame, I completely accept that, but in relation to grown-up children.
But surely the age cuts both ways, does it not? If, if, if the children are fourteen, fifteen, well, the parents have to look after them, however bad they behave, unless they're taken into care. You, you don't have to keep, uh, young men who behave like this at, at home when they're halfway through their twenties.
No, but that's, but it, I respectfully submit, that's part of my case.
Well, why didn't your client get rid of them?
They weren't there, I hate to say this. If you, Orion was there until, um, the, the, the date was given in this, in the middle of two thousand and nine. Uh, Devon certainly was living with his girlfriend for a very substantial part of the time. Uh, and Arain, um, Arain was there, right.
In relation to Devon, whether the judge criticised, the family said he was lying and living there, or the people who came, they left him later and were criticised. They clearly kept the property, a lot of people, he wasn't there.
Yes. But nothing happened at the property. I, there is a very great danger of just an accumulation of prejudice in this case. Devon was convicted of a horrendous incident, which makes me feel that Devon is probably a rather unpleasant man, and I say no more than that. But it did not take place in the course of any visit to the property or was in any way connected with, with, with my client's occupation of the property. And so there's no indication at all, telling him you can't visit, would have made any difference at all to the offence.
The truth of the matter is that either Devon missed, as you concede, not because he desired a character, desired a living there, or because he visited there. And he was somebody who was prone to be very unpleasant too. But somebody that the council could have taken into account when that was completely irrelevant.
That's a quite serious issue, goes to the heart of the proportionality case.
Is it irrelevant, the question I asked? Same as if you said, um, is it relevant? Some, that if somebody has a history of his family doing this, is visited by a frequent visitor, even if he isn't living there, by a son who does highly undesirable things? Are you saying that's irrelevant?
Yes, if the highly undesirable things are not done at the premises, yes. I, I certainly do. I mean, it's, this is, this is not a regime for punishing the, uh, the, the, the parents of children who, when grown up, are doing undesirable things. It's a, it's a regime for, uh, protecting the neighbours.
Yes, getting thoroughly appalling families out of an estate so that the neighbours can at last breathe in peace.
Well, your lordship says that, but, um, the, the, what, I mean, I can only go back, and I do go back to the propositions at the heart of it. You, your lordship, when you put that to me, you have to point to the mechanism by which it does mean that the neighbours can breathe in peace. And I don't see what it is, I genuinely don't see what it is. It's not been identified. They don't suddenly cease to exist because of the making of the, uh, uh, of the, of the eviction order. They don't cease to live with their girlfriends wherever it be in Greater Manchester. The mech, there has to be a mechanism.
There's a sort of honeypot argument, isn't there? Here are mum and dad, living in the home where these boys grew up, not far from central Manchester, and no doubt they have lots of friends and associates in the area.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, they'll tend to come back and go on with their activities in the area. And one of the reasons they'll come back is to see mum and dad and know that from time to time, get a, a meal or have their clothes washed and all the things that grown-up children, especially sons, seem to require of their mothers. Um, it's.
And mum is quite sympathetic, isn't she? I mean, she has a strong, said unjustified sense that her sons have been unfairly treated. And there you are, I mean, she's making excuses for it.
Yes, well, I, I follow all of that, but I, well, the honeypot view may be the only mechanism, but it's, um, it's my very respectful submission, not a very strong one, because if your leadership has, has just put to me, all the other legal connections continue. And if, if, if Mr. Pinnock is forced to move to another part of Manchester, um, then it's extraordinarily difficult to see how that is going to protect a particular area in which he presently resides.
It just adds to the reasons for their being there, despite the fact that they've found beds somewhere else. And in one case, work somewhere else, though not very far away. None of this is a long distance.
No, but that, that in a sense is part of my point.
Yes.
None of this is, is, is a long way away, because the eviction, and, and what that demonstrates, it is in some cases and not in others, actually, but I mean, it doesn't particularly matter. Um, not, all of that enables me to ask, pose and the rhetorical question, why does the eviction of Mr. Pinnock solve a social problem which is now the behaviour of grown-up children who are not under his control in a locality where they're perfectly entitled to be anyway? But that's our perspective, I mean, if it's not going to be thrown to court, it won't throw the court, but that is, that is the way, which, which we, we submit, one should look at it.
I'd just remind you, how long are Devon Pinnock and Trevor Pinnock, um, away for? When, when will they be?
Trevor's the murderer.
Trevor's the murderer, I imagine he's got some time to go.
What about Devon?
He got, he was dangerous, death by dangerous, wasn't he?
Yeah, so, I mean, he will be.
Devon got eight years in twenty oh eight. But can I repeat in relation to Devon? I, it's a shame that it comes down to this sort of detail, but it's quite important to my client. Devon did not commit, at, at the time of the making of the, of the, uh, of the notice, um, of, um, seeking termination, had not been guilty of any, uh, uh, offence that related in the recent past, that related to the occupation of the premises at all. Uh, I'll think again. No, Devon's not the murderer, I've got that one. Trevor is the murderer.
Trevor is the murderer and Devon is the dangerous driver.
Exactly right. That's, that's the submission on, 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 on the factual merits, which I, which I stay with. Um, now, my lord, can I then go from the facts to the principles just as, as shortly as I reasonably can? My lord, can I take the, whether proportionality is in play at all in stages? And we repeat this submission, but the simple way of looking at this is that, the simple and obvious way of looking at it before, one has to incorporate the Strasbourg case law, and that's obviously important, um, is that it's an undoubted fact that the authority in seeking, um, in, in seeking possession, the review panel in carrying out the review, and the authority in continuing the review proceedings, are all public authorities, subject to the obligation not to act unlawfully imposed by section six, one of the Human Rights Act. On the face of it, that means in an article eight case, that they must act proportionately. The classic formulation of what that means, as a minimum, is the speech of Lord Stane in Daily, which I won't take your lordship, my lady, too, but it's tab seventy-three of volume eight and the very well-known dictature at page five, four, seven, C to five, four, eight, D. That passage makes it crystal clear that a proportionality approach, as required by article eight intermedia, is not a repeat of a domestic reasonableness jurisdiction. It requires the court, in examining the act as alleged to be unlawful, to evaluate the legitimate aim, which is why I've been making the submissions I've been making about what the legitimate aim is, and requires the court to assess whether or not the action that is proposed is a proportionately action, in the sense of the least intrusive, to the problem that the legitimate aim is confronting. This case, on this legal structure, if I can, at this point, make the point that we have made in paragraph eleven of the reply, page six. Second bullet point, we are not dealing with a case, which is Mr. Stillitt's starting point, where the public authority has an unqualified right to possession as a matter of property law. That's not this case, because as the court world knows, the tenancy continues, under the, the motion tenancy, continues under the form of the legislation as it stood at the time of His Honour Judge Holman's decision up to the date, on which possession is to be given up. And in the post-nasely reforms, if I can call it that, continues up to the date on which it's executed.
Sorry, we're not dealing with what?
We're not dealing with an, an unqualified right to possession. We're not dealing with a situation where the landlord has an unqualified right to possession.
Well, it's unqualified provided only that he satisfies the statutory requirements of notices and review. Why isn't it unqualified in, in that sense?
Unless and until a lawful decision is made to terminate.
Well, it's the same with a notice to quit in any other sort of unsecured tenancy.
No, in respect, it's not, I mean, well, because if the notice, if, if, in a, in a pure common law situation, absent any statutory scheme, the local authority serves the notice to quit, and the notice to quit runs its four weeks or whatever it is, then the local authority has an unqualified right to possession, um, as a matter of pure property law. And the issue then is whether you can use a tenant, can use article eight, of what Mr. Stillitt's calls a long stop. So despite the. what Mr Stillitt calls a long stop, so despite the unqualified right to possession as a matter of domestic property law, and despite the difficulty of constructing a, some sort of legal right to remain solely on the foundations of Article eight, Mr Stillitt says, well, you won't be able to actually evict it, it's disproportionate, and it will only be in highly exceptional circumstances that it is going to be disproportionate, because the landlord has an unqualified right to possession, and that's the starting point. That is not the starting point here, because the tenancy, the property right, as part of the statutory scheme, continues until the court makes an order for possession, getting a date on which that order is going to take effect. So the decision is not one to evict, given an unqualified property right, it's a decision to bring the ability to evict into play by terminating the property right. And that is a distinction, and I rely quite strongly on it, because the whole of the Secretary of State's analysis is that we're effectively dealing with a trespasser case or a notice to quit case where...
You say the property right has merely been rendered less valuable by the demotion order.
But doesn't it?
It has not ceased to exist, unlike with the possession.
Exactly right. And the point, there are two consequences that flow from that, which I'm quite, well, quite keen to say, and therefore will say. The first is that when one approaches the question in the light of Mr Stillitt's approach on exceptionality, we don't accept that anyway, we think posing some sort of exceptionality test is going to create more problems than it solves, but we're just not in that territory anyway. The local authority has to consider the Article eight rights as part and parcel of the statutory scheme as to whether or not to bring this property right to an end. And were it not for the quasi-do charity K line of authority, I would have thought a very simple analysis was, you simply ask whether the decision is proportionate. That would be answered partly because, partly because, against the background that there has already been a demotion order, that I fully accept, but it still needs to be proportionate. And in our submission, therefore, needs to take into account the matters that I've indicated we're relying on the facts.
And does this argument suggest any distinction between demoted and introductory tenancies?
No.
Oh, okay.
Do you accept that?
There will be factual differences because of the length of time that the demoted tenancy is occupied, but in turn, the argument is an argument that we are not in a K doherty situation where there is no underlying property position, we're not in a McCann position.
But if there was justification for the demotion, then if the status quo and the behaviour quo, as it were, continues, that's all that needs to be shown, isn't it?
I accept that, but that is not accepting Mr Stillitt's starting point of exceptionality. It's simply accepting that there has been one investigation by a court that meets the Article eight criteria, without demotion order. Question, is it proportionate if the behaviour continues to evict? Well, the answer may be self-evident. The answer will be, yes, it is proportionate. It's not a question of exceptionality. It is at that point in the argument that my point about timing comes in. It's, you can't, when the children are growing up, simply treat it as a continuation of the same behaviour, but that's the point on the merits I've already made. But it's not a, you're not in the K doherty position. That's point one.
Can I just ask, are you at some point going to come to the distinction drawn by Mr Arden between asking whether the decision is proportionate, which is the phrase you've just used, by which I take you, that you mean the local authority's decision to ask for and to continue to seek possession? And the European courts' insistence that the measure, that's the eviction, be proportionate and that be determined by the independent tribunal?
Well, I mean, the answer's yes, but only in this way, the shape of these submissions, and I need...
You can only attack the decision on one...
I say, starting point is that even without the Strasbourg cases, it's obvious the proportionality is in play in a very straightforward way here.
Yeah.
See, and indeed, your lordship's speech in doherty, where your lordship sets out the fact that the constraints imposed by section six are only one of a number of constraints that will be imposed on any statutory discretion. So just from those, from the daily...
But is it in play sufficient, sufficiently to satisfy the Strasbourg test?
No, and that's, I mean, the structure of our Pinter cases, your lordship may have picked up, is that we say the starting point is, as I've just described, but one then has to absorb the complications, I say complications without being derogatory about it, the fact that Strasbourg has said proportionality needs to be reviewed, both as to the facts and its proportionality by a reasonable, by an impartial tribunal.
But does this, if the answer should be found in Daily, where Lord Stane raises the possibility that, as I read, in some cases, the doctrine of proportionality might need the reviewing court to assess the balance, if the decision maker has struck, not merely whether it's within the range of rational, reasonable decisions?
Well, we must get that far, on my simple and, I have to say, instinctive...
Is that saying that in some cases, actually, the court...
Yes. Your lordship will know that in, say, immigration judicial reviews, there are a line of cases which say that when the material is in front of the court, the court is in as good a position as the Home Secretary does to carry out the factory evaluation. We must get that far, but there's no shying away from the fact that Strasbourg has said that the court must also assess the facts if it's necessary to do so.
But this point is of fundamental importance, isn't it? That, my impression was, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, that things have moved on from Daily, because in Daily, Lord Stane said that it doesn't mean there's been a shift to merits review.
Yeah.
Lord Bingham in Huang explained that Lord Stane had been, parts of this important speech of his had been misunderstood. And Lady Hale, with, I think, the concurrence of everyone in misbehaving, Belfast City Council said in the plainest terms, that it is the court that must decide. I mean, is that in doubt?
No. But I think there are two aspects of the point that your lordship is putting to me. The first is who strikes the balance? And I completely accept that the post-Daily case law takes the observation of Lord Stane...
I would have been, should have been putting this to Mr Arden rather than you, but I wasn't aware that there was any real doubt about that.
Well, I say there should not be any doubt about it. But there are two aspects of the problem, aren't there? The first aspect is who strikes the balance? I mean, do you defer in any form at all to the balance struck by the decision?
Well, Lord Bingham says, yes, in Huang, yes, you do take account of someone who is responsible and has special knowledge of the subject.
Yes. But that does take the statement by Lord Stane one stage on, and I completely accept, uncontroversially, I would say, to that point, that the court strikes the balance. But the second issue, which in a sense is a novel issue, I think it's a novel issue caused by McCann and Connors McCann line of authority, who finds the facts? To what extent does the court carrying out the review have to investigate the underlying facts? Because the immigration cases, I mean, Huang is a difficult case in a sense, because of course the tribunal in Huang, the first instance tribunal case, is a fact finder, so it's not exercising a review jurisdiction at all. I say, uncontroversially, got to the stage that your lordship just put me as to who strikes the balance, but I also say, to accommodate Strasbourg, there has to be the adjustment that was actually made in doherty to the approach the county court can take to the facts. There has to be an ability of the county court itself to look at the facts, to take online the Connors McCann Polish line of authority.
All under the guise of reviewing the public authority's decision?
Yes.
Because of the language of section one four three D two? Perhaps?
Well, it's all under the guise of deciding whether the local authority is acting lawfully. And it seems to me the analysis is, I was going to go on, actually, this is the way in which one gets into this part of the analysis. Assuming that I'm right about that elementary starting point, one then asks the next question, what happens if you're dealing not with the review, but simply with a local authority pressing on disproportionately? The answer would seem to be that it ought to be uncontroversial that a judicial review court could restrain the authority that was pressing on disproportionately. I think Mr Arden possibly accepts that, and on the back of McCann, etc., would have to be willing to exercise a fact-finding jurisdiction or a jurisdiction in which the facts are investigated. And as we say in the note, it's page two, paragraphs five and six. What's actually happened is that an adjustment has been made in doherty to give the county court some jurisdiction over facts, but no jurisdiction over proportionality. The argument that Mr Stillitt puts forward is that, well, the, yes, the argument that Mr Stillitt puts forward, you put in paragraph six, is that the county court should look at proportionality but not at the facts. What we actually do is both, because that is what the Strasbourg case, this case has actually required.
So you're really saying we should take here the step we couldn't take in doherty because of K?
Yes.
And enlarge the inquiry to the proportionality in the light of the facts?
Yes, leave the fact-finding, conclusions on fact-finding as they stand in doherty, but abandon the, what in my submission is the untenable distinction between proportionality and other judicial review grounds.
You're quite pushed to get a duty on the court to examine the situation on the day of the hearing within one four three D two, which says unless it thinks that the procedure has not been followed, because after the last step in the procedure, what can you point to as having been something unlawful about following the procedure?
You can't within the confines of one four three D two, but that's not the end of the problem, because I think your lordship put this to me, well, a long time ago, on Monday morning, I suspect, or Monday afternoon. If the authority, having lawfully carried out the steps, one four three D two, is then confronted with a situation where, say, something has happened to make it obviously disproportionate to evict, then presses on with the eviction, that pressing on is an unlawful act by virtue of section six one.
It doesn't fall within one four three D two, does it?
No, it doesn't, but that doesn't, there's nothing in one four three D two that asks the jurisdiction of a judicial review jurisdiction to control the unlawful act of the authority. And what the one four three D two is telling you, that if proceedings are lawfully, if unrestrained proceedings, only unrestrained by a public law jurisdiction, are in front of the court, and the steps have been carried out, then the court must make the order. That is not telling the administrative court, because I think Mr Arden accepts that the administrative court can't intervene to stop the proceedings. If they're being pressed on unreasonably, then it becomes a foreign issue. If your allegation is that the steps have been carried, if you retell and say, okay, steps have been carried out, but I am now terminally ill to use the common example that we're now playing with, and it's disproportionate, then certainly, I would say, and I don't understand Mr Arden to say the contrary, the judicial review court could restrain the continued proceedings in those circumstances.
That's going to be the administrative court.
Yes, exactly, the administrative court. Given the adjustments to the scheme made by doherty, there is no reason why that step can't be taken by the county court.
Does that anything to section seven one B?
It's simply saying that section seven one B is straightforwardly in play.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what it is saying.
I mean, it's dependent on seven one B, that argument, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is indeed. If, yeah, it's simply saying that seven one B is in play in relation to the pressing on with the proceedings. That's exactly what it says.
I thought Mr Arden's position was that one four three D two stopped everything.
Well, as somebody in the court pointed out, as a matter of language, his case ought to be, you can't judicially review. But that's a fairly extreme submission, in which I would ask your lordship to reject if it is his submission.
I think that was his submission.
Yes. Well, if that is it, then we ask your lordship to reject it, and it's not the conclusion that, say, Lord Justice Waller came to McClellan or any of the other cases.
I think, to be fair to Mr Arden, he did say that judicial review in common law was so fundamental it couldn't be excluded. But human rights is restricted by the acts. Yes, yes, exactly.
I think that's probably right. I think that is true. But we ask your lordship to reject that perspective.
But it's part of the root of reasoning that would lead us possibly to make a declaration of incompatibility, rather than find the way round it, as you suggest.
Yes, I know, that's where Mr Arden gets to.
That's what he wants, yes.
We say, once you've bitten off the proposition that compatibly with one three D two, you can rule on the legality in section six one terms of the steps, and you can rule in domestic judicial review terms in the county court on continuing with the proceedings in Wensbury and other public law terms, you're not adding much to the mix if you say you can also, or doing anything that's incompatible with the statutory scheme, if you say section seven one enables the county court to restrain the unlawful proceedings.
We're still doing all this in the air with a lot of statements about how important or how feasible or how difficult it is, without any statistics as to how many possession actions there are in the country each year or anything.
There is, I can't, I don't, I'm not on top of the figures, but there is a place that, in fact, produced by the Home Office, which has some figures in it.
Does it help? That's a table of stats of how many possession actions are.
It doesn't, it doesn't break it down in relation to demoted tenants. I mean, I don't think the figures are going, I don't understand them well enough to think that they're going to help. Yes. The number of demoted tenants are in the hundreds, I mean, since the scheme started, is that right?
This is what? Sorry, give us the figures again, or whatever they were.
Mr Stillitt's has got it.
May I please, the court, I managed to obtain some very limited statistics, which I didn't feel answered my lord's question, but I'll give you them such as they are. And those are that in two thousand and two to three, which is the year we have figures for, twenty-six thousand tenants in total were evicted by local authorities and housing associations.
Does that include, does that mean actually evicted or possession orders were obtained?
No, actual evictions. Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
Of those, one thousand five hundred were for antisocial behaviour. In two thousand and eight to two thousand and nine, introductory tenancies accounted for seventy-two per cent of all new local authority lets in England. And the termination of introductory tenancies accounted for approximately one in ten evictions by local authorities. And then, since the two thousand and three act, nine hundred and fifty-five demotion orders have been made in total. And in the year to September oh eight, three hundred and fifty demotion orders were made. What I wasn't able to obtain, we weren't able to obtain, were any figures as to how many of those demotion orders led to eviction. I apologise for not having been able to find any more, but that's what we were able to find in the time available, and may give the court some idea of the scale we're talking about.
Does it indicate a surge in the year to, to, um, September two thousand and eight? You say three hundred and fifty in that, in those few months, yes.
That, that, that would indicate the rate of obtaining of demotion orders had increased?
Yes.
Because it's above average for the period since two thousand and three?
We have ten minutes.
Yeah, I realise, I was trying to fire it out of my head what I need to say. Well, come we deal with the, just the interregional argument, as it were, that we've just been, just been trespassing on. We, we have dealt with this in the written submissions. Um, we make, um, one short, two points. Um, the first is that in our respectful submission, Lord Byrne questioned our observation in the course of argument to the effect that you weren't, if you take on board a Human Rights Act challenge, you're not adding, uh, very much in terms of the incentive to, uh, defendant solicitors to the present post-doherty situation, because the competent, uh, the competent solicitor will no doubt think about the possibilities of running a Wensbury challenge, an extended daily challenge on conventional domestic grounds and so on. Um, so the prospect of, of, of simply adding proportionality to that in our submission does not add a lot. Uh, the second point is that your lordship will find in the documentation put in by the, uh, by Mr. Luber's clients, we refer to this at page five, letter G, um, some material, um, which consists of a paper by Mr. Madge, his honour judge Madge, sorry, um, no, his honour judge Madge. I still think of him about thirty years ago. Um, it, 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 a paper which is at tab three. And his recommendations accepted by Lord Justice Jackson, um, in, in the same clip. And so that's a, that's a proposal for a, a adjustment to the renter's protocol, to extend it to provide a way of managing, um, the practical problems of this case. So those are my two practical problems, practical propositions on forum. Um, sorry, on, on, on scale of problem. Can I just say this about forum? Um, in, in our respectful submission, Melona Friend's submissions about the availability of judicial review actually lead to a situation which distorts the Scottish scheme far more than our solution that it ought to stay in the county court for two reasons. The first is that your lordship and the lady have already seen, well, we've been discussing it endlessly, 143d2 requires the proceedings to be dismissed if the steps set out in 143, uh, in 144e, sorry, 14, well, anyway, whatever. The steps have not been carried out. Trying to go too far, the steps have not been carried out. Now, some of those steps, um, involve the service of a notice with particular information in it and matters of that sort. But in our submission, the statutory scheme envisages that a departure, positively envisages, that a departure from a rigorous procedural, uh, structure will lead to the dismissal of the proceedings, that's the intended effect. You have a short period, a relatively short period of demotion, an onus on the authority to get it procedurally correct. If it doesn't get it procedurally correct, the proceedings are dismissed. The second point is that, uh, the suggestion of adjourning it, of adjourning the possession proceedings and letting the landlord go off to the, sorry, the tenant go off to the administrative court is, in our submission, fundamentally inconsistent with the statutory scheme for the reasons canvassed by, uh, Lord Newberg earlier in argument, um, which is that what we're effectively doing is inviting the county court judge to adjourn the proceedings and then when they come back, to continue to adjourn them despite the fact that as a result of the decision of the administrative court, it is obvious that the steps have not been carried out. It was administrative court quatricity review decision, the steps haven't been carried out. On the face of it, the proceedings fall to be dismissed and returned to security. And you are inviting the county court to give a further adjournment to remedy that defect despite the wording of, of the relevant statutory provision. So, and that is a bigger distortion, we say, of the statutory scheme than, than our approach. I think there's one other observation that, um, I should make, having handed in this note and then I'll sit down. Um, my lord, we, the, the, um, we, at one stage in the note, invite your lordships not to endorse the approach that Lord Justice Waller took in the Telen to what was at stake in an introductory, introductory tenancy proceedings. Your lordship will recall, um, that he describes what is in play in introductory tenancy proceedings as being an evaluation of whether it's right to make an order against a weighing up of allegation and counter allegation.
In Gilboy?
I think it's probably both, isn't it?
How was it?
It's, sorry, it's both, I don't know which one we said in the note, but it's, it's, it's both. We, it may not arise for decision in front of your lordships because there were specific allegations in front of the review panel in this case. Um, and the review panel proceeded on the basis of trying to work out whether or not they were made good or not. But we certainly would invite your lordships not to specifically endorse the approach of Lord Justice Waller because in our submission, it is both unrealistic. What actually happens, um, is that allegations are made, the rules provide for cross-examination, they're investigated and the, and the, uh, the review panel does indeed decide whether or not they're made out. Indeed, we would submit that's what the statutory scheme envisages. Paragraph eight of my note, I'm going to give Mr. Luber for catching up on my own submission. Those are my submissions, so for a last bite at the honeypot argument, if I can do that, which is, we, we do maintain that his honour judge Holman has not addressed the matter in proportionality terms, or maybe the review panel, that's, uh, he, he in fact instructed himself not to. We say that's precisely the sort of issue which, which ought to go back to him or somebody like him. Uh, let's just see if it's any, if, if there is indeed any force in it. My lord, sorry for the gallop, but those are my submissions, I'm sorry. Those are my notes in the note.
Now, as we take a very stupid seat of debate. One is that, 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 I think we still need to make submissions of the time on costs.
Yes.
And we make also the receipt submission, that's a, rather, receipt submission now, next submission of the third phase order. It's, it's, it's expected.
They're obviously going to make a search.
We, 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 we have handed a bundle of submissions containing alternative remedies in antisocial behaviour. He's made those submissions of them, they have not been referred to before. If he had made submissions of them, I would have asked for submissions that have been referred yet. I don't know whether your lordship is going to take a chance on the rest of them.
Well, you'd be wise to put in the written note, just in case.
Thank you, I know we will be there.
The court is grateful to counsel for their submissions and will take time, perhaps quite a long time, to consider it, Judge.